All right, good evening and again, welcome everyone. And this is the regular city council meeting for April 19th, City of Minatrista, April 19th, 2021. So it's seven o'clock, we will start our meeting. And first order of business, do I have a volunteer to say the pledge of allegiance to start us off?
John, I can say it.
Thank you, John, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. So with that, I'll start out with the introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And council members present are Pam Mortenson.
Here.
John Chumperland.
Here.
Ann McGregor.
Here.
And Kathleen Refkin.
Here.
And our staff this evening is city administrator, Michael Barone.
I am here.
Community development director, David Abel.
I am here.
Finance director, Brian Grimm.
Here.
And director of public safety, Paul Falls.
I am here.
And director of administration, Ally Paulfus.
I am here.
Public work superintendent, Gary Peters.
I am here.
City clerk, Chris Lindquist.
I am here.
And our consultants, we have this evening with Kennedy, our attorney, Kennedy and Graven, Andrew Biggerstaff.
Here.
And our city engineer with WSB, Alison Falsky.
Here.
And I don't think Adam is joining us this evening, right?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. So with that, is, are there any things we need to add to the agenda? I don't believe so, so is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
This is Kathleen.
I'm on.
Thank you, Kathleen, and Pam seconded that. All those in favor will signify with aye. Aye, Lisa Whalen, vote aye. Kathleen Refkin.
Aye.
And Pam Mortenson.
Aye.
And John Chumperland.
Aye.
And Ann McGregor.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. So next we move on to special presentations. Brian, I believe you will be doing our first quarter 21 financial update.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. So this is, yeah, it starts on page three of the packet. And I don't know if, and nothing really too, what I guess earth shattering to report, but just wanted to at least give the regular quarter, the report. Regular revenue expenditure reports from the general fund as well as the cash and investment balances of all funds are, were attached on, I think it's three through 15 in the packet. The revenues are sitting at about 7%, which is basically similar to last year at this time. In 2020, we just don't get our taxes, you know, it sort of came up even at the work session. We don't get our tax settlements till June, July of the first half and then December of the second half. So that's why you see that we are only at, you know, 7% of our overall collections for the total a year. Um, licenses and permits are tracking pretty well for its first quarter. We've collected about 23% of our annual budget amount. So I think the permit activity is still doing, you know, doing well, pretty strong for this time of year. The other item that maybe people picked up on the revenue report is that the investment income slash market value adjustment on our investments is actually a negative number right now. And I tried to explain there in those next couple of sentences. It just has to do with how basically the investment is from basically par value to market value. And it's just, you know, based on the market conditions right now. We always hold all our maturities, our investments to full maturity. So they mature at par value. So really, it's just a book value right now that we have to book based on the government accounting standards board and those type of standards that are out there. As far as the expenditure side, you'll see on the, you saw on the, the report that was included that we're basically at about 23% year to date in comparison to the 2021 general fund budgeted expenditures, which compared pretty, you know, but once again, it pretty much matched where we were at last year, about at 23% of, you know, when you compared the amount spent to the, to the budget. Then it's notated there that some things we've paid for in full already, like property insurance, where some is half through the, you know, the year, the fire department contract billings. And then some things haven't been, you know, will be paid more in the summer, the assessing services. So, um, otherwise, yeah, maybe I'll just open it up for any questions. I guess the last note I have on there is that the 2020 audit financial report should, is scheduled to be presented at the council meeting on May 17th. So basically in a couple of meetings in about a month, that, that final audit report for 2020 should be presented. So I'll open up for any questions and yeah, go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Council, any questions? I'll start with Kathleen, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, and Ann, any questions?
No, I don't.
All right, and John?
No, I don't, thanks for the detail, Brian.
And Pam?
I did not have any questions either.
So I'm just going to make a couple of comments. One, if you look on page 14 in the packet, it lists all of our fund balances. And that's where the road maintenance fund, number 406, is listed at 1,000, 1,253,000. And that is before the levy amount, which we'll be levying 725,000. So that'll bring it up to roughly 1.9, little, almost just under 2 million for the year. And then the other thing I talked to Brian about too, is you might notice that there's several, let's see, like the Highland Road Debt Fund is at 95,000. And I asked him, how come we would need the fund, why we would need to carry a fund balance in these debt funds? And so it was the Highland Road Debt Fund, and I think there was another one, Maple Crest Debt Fund. Brian, could you just kind of quickly explain why it's good to have a balance in these funds?
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council. So the reason sometimes we have a positive balance in these funds is we just don't know exactly when, especially when these funds have a special assessments with them. We don't know when people are gonna, or property owners are gonna pay off special assessments, you know, whether they're gonna carry them over the full 15 to 20 years or pay off early. So in some of those funds, like the Maple Crest and Highland, I think, you know, the cases where we've gotten some prepayments of assessments and we still keep our levy pretty level. So we'll see those amounts probably over the next year sort of slide down a little bit each year. So it's more of a timing difference on when the revenues, you know, come versus the schedule of principal and interest payments.
Okay, thank you. I just thought that was interesting to point out. So that's all I have, good job, Brian, thank you very much. Um, so, okay. With that, and it looks like we're right on track too, at the 23% expenditures and, and so on. So great job. Next, we move on to persons to be heard. Mike, do you have any letters or emails that you need to read?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, I have one letter. And I'm actually kind of looking at our, the screen here to see if there's a speaker here. So the short story is, is that I received an email last Thursday from Tony Leonard, who lives on Westwood Drive. And then tonight at 6:30, I received an email from a man named Chad Higgins, who lives on Maple Crest. And both of them are wanting to have Tony's email read into the record. But the 6:30 email that I got made it sound like Mr. Higgins is gonna be at the meeting and quickly talk about his topic, but I don't see him on the call. I don't know if he's there and I've just not seen him or what the story is. But nonetheless.
Go ahead and read it, Mike. I don't see him on the, on the.
I don't see him either.
All right.
So the, the topic that they're wanting to have the council consider is having to dealing with the local Canadian goose population and their desire, these residents' desire to address this issue. And, and what he's telling me, I don't know the validity of all the things that Mr. Leonard or Mr. Higgins are talking about, but we certainly can research this, I'll just preface that. So they're saying the DNR requires support from the city for a group, I think it's an outside third-party group, to deal with the Canadian geese. Now, I think what Mr. Higgins sent me tonight was like a PowerPoint and some other materials. And I told him there would be no time for that. This is just a three-minute thing to talk about something that's not on the agenda. So we can certainly provide that information to, to you folks. But basically that, that's what their goal. They're saying they'd like to have some sort, some action done with revolving around creating a city plan to address the local goose population. There's, they're telling me that it won't cost the city anything. And, but it, according to the DNR, that's what needs to take place, the requirement that the city has a plan in place. I don't know what that plan would look like. I don't know enough about this topic. But if accepted, that allows groups to contract with some companies, I guess, that are in the goose, I don't know if it's relocation business or whatever. But, but that's the nature of his request. So Mayor and Council, I think what I'll do is, he sent me some information and I think we'll have staff review that and bring it back at a future meeting to kind of give you a better idea of what, what it is that they're after. Maybe we'll talk to him on the phone or something. But right now, they just want you to consider it. And I don't think you have enough to go on and I don't think staff knows enough about this either. So, but I don't think it's, I don't think it should be a no from the council. But, but if you're okay with us doing some research on this, we can bring this back, so.
Yeah, so if you want to manage the Canadian geese population around the lake, especially it's around the lakes, you do need, the DNR does request that or require that the city approve a plan. And so that, I do know that. So they'd have to work up a plan and bring it to the city and the city would have to approve it. I would say that timing is sort of critical because they would want to start this pretty soon. And so if you do some research and talk to these gentlemen, I don't know if you would want to bring it back at a special presentation next time so we can have a little bit of discussion about it or?
Madam Mayor, if I, Madam Mayor, if I may, this is David here as well. And I'll just point out too, I mean, I've talked to Tony over the years. I mean, this has come up a number of times over the years. The council actually several years ago did, did discuss it and to, to a little bit. And we don't really have much, much more information than Mike's already, already said. The only other thing what I wanted to say is, if the city were to go down the path of, of adopting a plan, a goose management plan, that seems like a pretty straightforward process and a little bit of information that I know. The, the, you know, the devil's always in the details of some of these things. And so it goes on to say in Tony's email, he does allude to this as well, and I've heard this, is that once the city goes ahead and adopts this plan, which seems pretty easy, whenever some group or individual wants to go ahead and manage those said geese, the city then has to issue a permit to them. And so that, you know, like I said, the devil can be in the details of some of these things. And that's just something I wanted to point out that the council should understand as this, as this moves forward. And how do you want to issue that permit? Is that something that's gonna provide, you know, a public hearing? Is that something the council's gonna sign off on? Is that an administrative permit? All those sorts of questions. We've run into controversy with some, with something similar to this with beavers and trapping of beavers. And that being something we actually do, we don't have a management plan, but we have a trapping permitting process for beavers. And I don't know, Madam Mayor, if you were on the council at the time or if you recall that that actually, over the years, has caused quite some controversy where you have some people in a neighborhood who are all for it, you have some who are obviously completely against it. So just, just reminding everyone of, of some of the facts that probably are going to come later with this and to make sure everyone understands that that, that is what is all, is required ultimately, is that the city go ahead and issue a permit for it. So just wanted to make sure everyone thought about that.
Yeah, well, we, we'd have to look at all the information, I think, before we make any, any decision of any kind. So.
Certainly, yes.
So, so council, do you want?
Mayor Whalen, I noticed that somebody by the last name of Higgins just joined our meeting. So I assume it's Mr. Higgins, even though it looks like his wife's name is popping up on our screen. So I don't know, Mayor, if you wanted to allow Mr. Higgins two or three minutes to talk. I think we sort of covered it, but as long as he dialed in, maybe give him that courtesy.
Sure. Mr. or Ms. Higgins, I'm not sure which one?
You'll have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear us?
Chad Higgins, if you can hear us, can you unmute your microphone? And we'll, the mayor will give you a few minutes to speak. If not, we'll, we'll move on. I don't know if he's.
I don't see him as being muted.
There he is.
Okay. Is this Michael?
Uh, well, I'm the city administrator, but the mayor's running the meeting. So you should direct your questions to her.
I apologize, and Ms. Mayor, I apologize about that. I clicked on the link on my computer. I've been sitting waiting to be accepted, but my wife tuned in and here we are. So I ran in the room.
Right, well, welcome. So Mike, Mr. Barone, he read your email and your request. And again, we won't take action on it this evening. But if you'd like a few minutes, I'll give you just a couple more minutes to explain what you want to do. And, and then the council can kind of decide where they want to direct this to.
Oh, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Um, so overall, we just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that the city has no cost involved here. This is, the epidemic of the geese, they're, they're multiplying out of control. And the amount of waste that they're leaving on yards, even with every natural deterrent possible, is, I sent a PDF packet that you can all review on your own time, but it's astonishing, the amount of waste that's left behind. And Tony Leonard and I and a bunch of groups of other developments have already put together the goose management plan that's needed that the city just has to accept into record in order for the DNR to issue permits. So everything is taken care of by private citizens and everything's done humanely. And all of the production of the goose population, when it's reduced, is given away to food shelters and the poor. So all we're looking is for everyone to review the situation. And I know Tony has joined, is there anything you want to add really quickly, Tony?
Um, no, I literally, I apologize, I just caught the very tail end of it. No, I think what I heard so far sounded right on.
And, and Ms. Council and the mayor, I've provided all the information. I just wanted everybody to have a moment to know that it's really affecting all of us and the safety and the health of our children as we're trying to enjoy the lake and the lakefront. And we've found a way to make it where it doesn't cost the city anything. And it, it is all approved by the DNR, all permitted and all paid for by private citizens.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Higgins. And, and Tony, or, I'm sorry, the other thing. So what we'll, we'll do is staff has your presentation and he will share that with the council. And then the council will have just a brief discussion here about where you want, where the council wants to go with this. And most likely, we'll, we'll have to bring it back, of course, for, for approval. So council, do you want staff to research this a little bit more? And then come back with a recommendation and also provide us with the information that these gentlemen have provided Mike with? I'll start with John, comments, questions?
Yes, I'd like as much information as we can get. So whatever was supplied and if there is other, obviously, local jurisdictions around the lake that have instituted it, if it's the same thing or, or how it fits, I would like to know as well.
Yep, good idea. Ann?
Um, yes, I think it's a great idea to, to research this and, and bring back more information. I lived in a property that had a goose problem many years ago and it can be quite out of hand.
Yes. Can be a slippery slope. All right.
Is that no pun intended, Lisa?
Yeah, exactly. All right, Kathleen, where, is that okay if we bring this back with more information?
Yes.
All right, and Pam?
Yes, and I appreciate the, the homework that the residents have done to, you know, ahead of time so that will make it a little easier on our staff.
Yeah, all right. So Mr. Barone, when do you think you could bring this back?
Well, Mayor, like I said, we'll need a little bit of time to research it. I don't have an answer for you tonight. My guess is we might be able to get this back to you at your next meeting, but no promises, but we'll do our best.
Okay, and if not the next meeting, for sure the second meeting.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. Just gonna depend on workload and other topics that we gotta consider, so.
All right, thank you. Well, let's see if we can make that happen at our next meeting. And if not, we'll deal with it. All right, thank you very much. And good to bring this to our attention. So any other persons to be heard, Mike? I don't think so. All right, thank you. All right, next we'll move on to our consent agenda items. They consist of approval of our special city council meeting minutes from March 25th, 2021. B is approve our work session meeting minutes from April 5th, 2021. C is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from April 5th, 2021. D is approve our closed session meeting minutes from April 5th, 2021. And E is a resolution to approve our claims. F is a resolution to accepting improvements and authorizing final payment for sewer lining project 5-20. And G is a resolution to approve the renewal of the communication system subscriber agreement with Hennepin County, and that is for the 911 center. So are there any you need to remove? All right, hearing none then, I'm looking for a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, and F, and G.
I'm on, this is Pam.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson, is there a second?
This is Kathleen, I'll second.
Thank you, and council member Refkin made that second. So all those in favor will signify with aye. Aye, Lisa Whalen, vote aye. And council members, Ms. Mortenson.
Aye.
Ms. Refkin.
Aye.
And Ms. McGregor.
Aye.
And Mr. Chumperland.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. So we have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to our business items consisting of our public comment for our draft body camera policy. I believe that would be Chief Falls.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. So this is, as you're aware, the, the second meeting that we have allowed for public comment to date. We have not received any, either by email or at the last meeting. So we have, really, it's not uncommon for a city to get very few or even no comments on this particular topic. With that, I guess I could stand for any questions, otherwise we'll continue to move forward and order up the equipment that we talked about, which does take several weeks to get. And then we'll just implement that over time. And I will, as we do that, I'll keep you updated on our progress.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, do you need the council to approve the policy?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I don't believe so because it's still, technically, it's still a draft policy. And so what we would do when we, I don't anticipate that policy changing from its current form. However, we will run that by the Minnesota Post Board, who would review that and just make sure that it is in accordance with state statute.
Okay, so it has to be approved by the, by the post board, right?
Yeah, they would review it. I don't know that they have an official approval process. The post board has a number of mandatory policies. And while they have said that we are required to have a policy, if we have body worn cameras, that is not currently one of their model policies. But certainly, we would seek their input as, as we move forward.
Okay, all right. Council, any comments or questions? All right, so with that, that concludes our, our business items. And we'll move on to administrative items, staff reports. Mr. Barone?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Just a couple of items, a reminder that our next meeting is two weeks from tonight on Monday, May 3rd. And the only other item I have is a schedule related. There is a mound fire commission meeting on Wednesday, April 21st at 10:00 a.m. It's a virtual meeting. I believe council member Refkin is going to attend. I know I'm going to attend. I'm not sure, Mayor, if you're going to be attending or not, but I know you're invited.
I plan on it.
So, okay, so the three of us will be participating in that. And other than that, Mayor, that's all I have for staff reports tonight.
Okay, any other staff members with reports? And David, I think, I believe Pam, you are the designee for the planning commission meeting, is that correct?
I am.
All right, and David, we have a public hearing, correct, for the planning commission meeting?
Yes, we have, yes, we have three public hearings.
Can you just give us the rundown real quick?
Um, sure, we have the, the solar ordinance variant, or the solar ordinance update, public hearing that the planning commission and council have both looked at. And then we have two, two variants request. One's just a renewal of a previous approved variance and one would be a, a new variance for a setback variance that's being requested.
Okay, so lots for the planning commission to decide. Thank you, David. All right, so next we'll move on to, on to council reports. We'll start with Mr. Chumperland.
Thank you. Attended the Pioneer Sarah Creek monthly meeting last Thursday. Two items, one, our facilitator from the administrative staff, Amy, who usually, almost 100% of the time attends and tends to be the facilitator of all the discussion. She was not present, she was diagnosed with COVID. And so we kind of ad libbed through the meeting with Mr. Baker, the chairperson, taking on a little more responsibility. Also in the meeting, the commission agreed to a budget meeting, which we are going to tag on to our next monthly meeting in May. So prior to our regular monthly meeting in May, we will have a budget discussion to try, we'll come up with a proposed 2022 budget with the objective of it being approved by the commission in June's meeting so that the cities can get their assessments by July 1 for their budgeting process. Just for info, last year, an assessment for Minatrista was $14,899, which had been a slight decline from the year before. No clue where it'll be this year as we know that's all based on fair market values of the six cities. So we'll know better after our May meeting where we reside. That was, that was it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chumperland. Councilmember Mortenson?
Um, I attended the personnel committee meeting to discuss labor union contracts on the 6th. WCC meeting has not been set yet. I think that's it.
Thank you. And Ms. Refkin?
Uh, just as Mike said, the fire commission meeting is on the 21st and I will be attending, attending it virtually.
Thank you. And Ms. McGregor?
No, nothing this evening.
All right, thank you. I attended the Northwest League meeting and ironically enough, it was Mr. Atchison from Hennepin County Assessor's office, kind of giving us an overview of the entire county. Interestingly enough, we've seen some increases out here as we found out from Mr. Winn during our previous meeting. But the decreases have been fairly significant in the more core metro area for. in the um, more core metro area for business um, and commercial properties. So that might shift some of the taxes a little bit. We'll see what happens. But um, it's about a eight percent uh, decrease, overall decrease on commercial and business properties. So that's fairly significant. And then um, let's see. And then uh, I, I will attend the Wednesday Fire Commission meeting, and I also attended the labor negotiations as well. So that is it for now. And um, if we have nothing else, then we could be adjourned, and this might even be a record.
I think it is.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn then?
This is John, so move.
Thank you, Mr. Chumperland. Is there a second?
This is Ann.
This is Pam.
Okay, Ms. McGregor made that second, and then all those in favor will signify with aye. Ms. McGregor.
Aye.
Ms. Refkin.
Aye.
Ms. Mortenson.
Aye.
And Mr. Chumperland.
Aye.
And I vote aye, Lisa Whalen. So we are adjourned. Motion passes five oh. Have a good evening.